Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of February 10th, 2021. I'd like to call the meeting to order and do the Pledge of Allegiance first.
Pledge of Allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, we'd like to do the Town Report dedication, so I would like to ask Mary Letourneau if she could come up here.
Town of Acton dedication. This year's Town Report dedication comes with a very heavy heart. In August of 2020, Town of Acton came to a sudden stop as we learned of the passing of District 2 Road Commissioner Joseph D. Letourneau. A hardworking, dedicated man with a very strong work ethic are just a few of the words to describe Joe. He was an honest, kind-hearted soul who would have done anything for anyone. Joe and his wife Mary were very active in the Town of Acton. It would be no surprise to see active recreational teams sponsored by Earthworks Landscaping or Keeping it Local, two of the businesses owned locally by Joe and Mary. Joe was appointed to Town of Acton District 2 Road Commissioner in December of 2018. Joe had previously been employed by the town over several years to assist with winter plowing in District 2. Although only a short duration of service as our Road Commissioner, Joe always went above and beyond to serve the needs of the taxpayers. He invested both time and money in a position that was not guaranteed after his two-and-a-half year appointment because he wanted to help the town, and that was the kind of man he was. In closing, it is our deepest heartfelt thoughts and prayer go out to the Letourneau family and friends who love him. All of us at the Town of Acton will always be grateful for the job he did and the man he was. You guys want to hand those out?
Yes.
We have more if anybody else wants some. Did every, okay. At the end, we'll bring, oh, David's got some. Do you want to give them to those?
Yeah, we can give them.
Yeah, we can give out. Thanks.
I'd just like to say thank you to Mary and the Letourneau family for allowing us to do this. We really appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't have to stick around for the whole meeting. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you very much. Stay warm out there.
Yes.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you ready?
Time of the choice?
No.
It would be adjourned.
Okay. So next will be the Town Administrator's Weekly Update.
Sorry, I just.
It's okay.
Need a minute. We all know that Joe was a good man.
Yeah, we can, we'll come back to you.
Okay.
We did the warrant and bills, all three of us.
Yes.
And that's done. We could make a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All right. I'm going to table the minutes of the last meeting because I didn't get through on my tribe, but, so, we could do Department Head and Committee Chair updates.
Chairman of the Warrant Finance Committee, we have scheduled a Warrant Finance Committee meeting for March 1st. I haven't spoke to Jen about it yet, and I, obviously, there'll be contingent on the availability of the Town Hall, and I'll give you a call tomorrow night or something, Jen, and.
I feel like it's available, but we can check after the meeting if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Will it be at 6:00?
Yes, it is. At 6:00.
Okay, all righty.
It'll be put on the town's website. Jen's very good about that, and I'll send out some emails.
Leslie Berlin, Road Committee Chair. I just wanted to make some clarifications from, I watched the meeting from, the Selectmen's Meeting from last week.
Can you drop it, please?
And it seems that there was some comments and thoughts that the Road Committee was inappropriate in bringing forward the two warrant articles that we thought the town people should vote on, and that the Road Commission should have come from the Road Commissioners. Well, the Road Commissioners both belong to the Road Committee. Both Road Commissioners were in attendance at the meeting. We took a vote whether we should bring them forward to the Selectmen. There was no discussion when I asked if anyone had anything to say, and the vote was all in favor. So, it's not a surprise to the Road Commissioners that we brought these forward. They were part of the discussion. They voted to bring it forward, so. And there was, seemed to be some confusion as to the, whether that money should be in their budget or not. We presented it, that it should not be in their budget, that it should be a separate line item, which is why it was, we wanted it as a separate article. So it was not in their budget for them to take away from their other projects.
I appreciate the clarification.
I understood that at the last meeting. When you invited the Road Commissioner up, I asked him my question, and he opened up the can of worms, not me. So, but at the end of the day, don't matter who puts forward the budget, it's who's spending the budget, and the Road Commission would be spending the budget. That's why I believe that it should be part of the Road Commission's budget. Now, the Road Commissioner could ask for a special project. He could do that. He can have, it doesn't have to be part of his general maintenance. He can do that. And what I was saying at the last meeting was, if the Road Committee decides that's what they, they would like to see the Road Commission put through, because he's the one spending the money, you're not. So if you're going to put through an article for, say, $50,000 for whatever, and $50,000 for whatever, who spends the money? Who's authorized to spend it? It's the Road Commissioner.
It's a line, it's a line, a separate line item.
Exactly. But at the same time, who spends the money? It would be the Road Commissioner.
That has no bearing.
It does have bearing because somebody has to have the authority to spend it.
Well, that's true. You're right.
And the Road Committee doesn't have the authority to spend money.
You have to give them that authority to spend that money for that particular purpose.
Exactly. But putting it forward, my question was, wasn't the money being put forward, is who puts it forward? That was the only difference. And my, my, my thought was that the Road Commissioner puts it forward through his budget, but he doesn't have to put it, because we're a line item, we've got our snow plowing, our general maintenance, all this stuff's a line item anyways. All he has to do is put it on a different line item.
The thought was, put it in front of the people, for the people to decide rather than having three Selectmen decide whether to do it or not. It's, you know, I didn't hear any discussion about any of the merits of what we were proposing. You know, we do have a lot of elderly people who have trouble driving at night because they can't see.
And I agree with that, and I agree with.
Let's talk about the safety and the purpose for bringing it up, rather than, well, you shouldn't have brought it up, they should have.
That's not what I said. You took it the wrong way. I said, if, and that's when I asked him, you know, do you, is this what you want to do? And he said, no. Okay, that's when it got all squirrely. Though, the issue wasn't whether or not we should be putting it forward, it's who's putting it forward? That was the question.
I disagree with you on that?
I'm sure you do.
Aren't they supposed to work together, though? The Road Commissioners and the Road Committee?
The Road Committee is a.
I mean.
Advisory committee. Advisory committee to the Road Commissioners. And as far as the, you know, the two, the projects, yes, they need to go forward, but they really need to come, you do it as a group, you know, the Road Committee and the Road Commissioners come up with the plan as a group, and then what I foresee is the Road Commissioners on their respective side, or in this particular case, it's both sides, puts it forward as a special project.
I mean, it's, I mean, we're talking semantics.
It's the same, yeah, but it's just a matter of getting it in the right order, though. I mean, it's wonderful that you, and you did it exactly the right way as far as discussing it at the Road Committee level, discussing it with the Road Commissioners, coming up with the information, coming up with the pricing and all that. It just needs to come from the Road Commissioners to put it forward, or someone can do a petition to put it forward, but there's no need to that because I'm all forward, I'm all for putting this forward and doing it. It just needs, it's just where it needs to come from.
I mean, it's, we had.
And if one wants to.
To present it to the Selectmen, and which is what I did.
Right, but it needs to come from the, it's under the auspice of the Road Commissioners, okay? You guys don't go out and do roadwork and whatnot, so it's, it's, you come up with the idea as a group, but the spokespeople, not even the spokespeople, you're the spokesperson for the Road Committee because you're the chair, but the Road Commissioners put it forward as a special project, and, you know, we'll say, you know, with the guidance or with the approval of the Road Committee or however they want to word it, that one, so.
Honestly, at the end of the day, they may not even have to put it through as a special project. If that's part of their budget and they want to make that part of their budget.
That would be part of their budget after it passes. I mean, it's something we don't have now. We don't have striping on the road.
And we don't, we did, the thought was, we didn't want to take money away from their regular budget.
Budget, so you wanted to.
That's why we said a separate article.
Right, and that's exactly the way it needs to be. It's just a matter of who it needs to come from, that's all. You don't have a budget to put forward, they do. So they can, and they're the ones that can put warrant articles forward into it the easiest way and simplest way, is just have them do it. And yes, I'm in favor of the articles, a whole lot of it, so I want to see them move forward.
And also, the engineering report, there was some discussion on the engineering report, and I think, Dave, you said there was two proposals from the engineering, there was actually three.
Yeah.
One of them was a quick, was a short-term, quick fix for $95,000, the second was.
I wasn't looking at that as a, you know.
Well, I just, you know.
It was two proposals that were a fix-it, complete fix-it. One of them was a patch, and so I didn't consider that a proposal.
I just wanted to clarify that it was actually three. And one of the other problems that we had with the engineering report was the potential problems permitting.
Yeah.
That was the other, because I didn't hear it mentioned in last week's meeting, so I just wanted to remind everyone of that, that piece of it, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other Department Heads or Committee Chairs? Do either one of you Road Commissioners want to come up and talk about lines or crack sealing or, is there anything? Do either one of you want to move that forward?
Leslie just said it was a five, it was a unanimous vote.
Right, but these two are saying they have to come up.
Well, I mean, they're just the ones that have to put it forward as far as what I understand. They're the ones that have, you know, a working budget. They put it forward as a special project. It doesn't say, nowhere in writing does it say you're only allowed one special project.
Do we have the Road Commissioners come up so we can talk to them for a second?
Yeah, that's what I was.
I've got a couple questions because they, they just passed their budgets, and I want to.
Right, do you want a special, you know?
Seeing you guys just passed your budgets in, this, this happened, what, two weeks ago at the Road Committee meeting? It was two weeks ago? Did you include that in your budget, though?
I did not.
You did not? Do you feel it should be?
I mean, I don't think the crack seal, not right now, but I'd be, there's a line of the striping for the fall at night, if we can, if we can put that in, can we put it in our budgets now, or can we put it in?
You can do a special. I mean, right, extra.
So, we'll look into it, come to you like within the week until we want, you know, this article, like $50,000 or something.
Obviously, you're going to have to get some pricing.
Yeah, that's what you're saying.
So, I mean, the reason why I'm asking up here, if you feel like you want to put that on, we, we could still do that.
I think it's already, wasn't it already put in as a, in with our?
I place, we place it, we've got a placeholder for two warrant articles underneath the roads, but we don't have any, but then the budgets came and went, so we took them out.
But if we get the placeholder sitting there, we know it's coming forward, so.
Yeah, email to Rowan and I, and we can look into it further.
All right.
I mean, it must already have numbers attached to it if the Road Committee was trying to put it forward.
So, we get the numbers for the, the striping, we can put that in as like a article?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, sooner than later, we have a budget meeting scheduled that you guys okay, because we thought we had all the numbers, so. I mean, if you could get them to us, I don't know if we've started prepping or if we're starting fresh. Have you started working on numbers?
Yes, Cindy's working on pricing. She sent me some preliminary stuff, but I have some questions from her, so as soon as I get them answered.
Because it, that doesn't do any good for us to have a workshop with the Treasurer, the five of us, if we don't have all the numbers, so.
When was that scheduled for?
At the 18th.
18th.
So, next week, next Thursday.
Should be able to have, have the numbers into us by Wednesday?
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
I mean, I priced it out years ago, and, you know, there's, yeah, they'll give you a mile.
Ten cents a foot.
What's that?
It's like 10 cents a foot.
Yeah, so you call around and get an average of what it is per mile and, you know, obviously.
Yeah. Typically, you put it in as a special project, it's something we haven't ever done, and then in, in forward years, you know, like next year, you put it in, if it needs to be done again, you just put it in your budget.
Is that it every year?
Yeah.
Paying it in there?
Yeah.
The email I got from Cindy's gave me a price of .07 per foot for the five stripes and .12 per foot for the center of the line. So she got prices for both of them. We worked, we're proposing the center lines.
Yeah, just the side, yep.
Yeah, so like 7.7 what?
Point zero seven.
Seven cents a mile.
Seven cents, so, okay. All right, so maybe we can.
How many miles do we have?
Is it like, David?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, but I, I highly doubt we're going to do them all.
How many, how many miles are we proposing?
That's what we'd always considered doing was, you know, the Sanborns, the H Roads,
the Goose Ponds and stuff like that, not, you know, Peacock or something like that, you know, start off with.
Right. So can you guys get us a list and miles so we can try to get it in there?
Absolutely. Thank you. Do we have any other Department Heads, Committee Chairs? How are you doing? You ready?
Ready.
All righty.
The February 1st, I think, was the deadline for ordinance numbers, or February 3rd. Land use secretary did let me know that the Planning Board looks like they're at about five ordinances, they're not sure on one of them as I kind of understood it, so they're looking at about five. So just wanted to let you know that. We have a workshop on the 18th with the Treasurer, hopefully starting at 4:30 if you guys can get here, so we can go over the budget, because you'll see later on, we've got another Zoom meeting that night. I was going to tell you that there was an error on last week's Board of Selectmen's Meeting because I was notified from the Department Head that it wasn't filmed, so when Ms. Berlin mentioned that she watched it, that kind of threw me off, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if the February 3rd meeting's on. I got an email from.
No, I have a friend who tapes them.
Oh, okay, so they watched it live and taped it?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So then, okay, then there was an error on the 2-3 tape, there was no video produced, but I am wondering if there's any way that we could tie your friend and the APAT Director up to see if he could convert it for YouTube, because as I understand it, we have no recording of it at all.
I would ask.
Maybe, I mean, it's something.
So, who do you want me to contact?
You can contact me, and I'll get you in touch with Mr. Corey. I mean, just a thought, if it was a way to save it. So, no meeting last week was produced. Emailed you a notice from the School Committee, or the School Department, letting you know that they have a Zoom meeting this Thursday on the budget. You have a direct URL in there, Warrant Finance, hopefully you've got that same one with the direct meeting, so if anybody needs help with Zoom.
What time is that?
Hmm, I think it's, yeah, it's either 5:00 or 6:00. Is it 5:00?
Right.
Yeah, just double-checked the email, but it is in there. Who's the school liaison? Is that you, David?
Yes.
Yeah. Reminder that next Monday is President's Day, that's one of the days that you guys put in the personnel policy, so the transfer station will be closed. FYI, that I have a training Zoom class, Remain Municipal, tomorrow from 9:00 to 12:00 on running effective Zoom meetings. Oh, so that should be interesting. Planning Board added an extra meeting this month to February 25th, I was notified of today. Nomination papers for a Board of Selectmen's seat, I believe two school board seats and District 2 Road Commissioner will be available at the end of the month. First calculation was around February 26th, so that posting is coming up. And then last thing is more of an FYI, that all next week in the state of Maine, you have free fishing, should you be so inclined? Too many of your privileges haven't been revoked by the state of Maine. No. So, that's all I have.
All righty, well, then we can move on to old business. A HEB meeting.
Yeah, so I was able to confirm a Zoom meeting, and I haven't sent this link out yet, I just found out today, on February 25th at 6:00. So I'll send the same notice that I sent you guys and the Road Committee with that direction, and Mr. Fornier's going to run it and go over, I asked him just to kind of recap the original plan and kind of, you know, what you guys told me from last week, so he's prepared to do that on the 25th.
And then we've got B, which is a Canal Bridge meeting with the Town of Wakefield.
Correct, and I did.
That's on the 18th?
Yeah, that's on the 18th, 6:00, so we meet with the Treasurer at 4:30. That Zoom meeting will start at 6:00. And I did ask them to make sure that they notified the individual from the Historical Society.
Oh, okay.
That you have it spoken to, I don't, you know, I asked them to anyways.
All right, well, we can move on to new business. A resignation?
A resignation from a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Bob Anderson has decided to retire from the ZBA effective on 2/7, so we'll go ahead and advertise that we have a position open for that. There are two alternates, so they should be able, somebody will move up based on, I think in the past you've done, whoever served the longest, so we'll take a look at that. Somebody will move up and the alternate seat will become open. Is that how, how you want to do it?
Yes.
That's how we do it, right? So, confirm motion to accept his resignation with regard?
All right.
We accept Bob Anderson's resignation with regard?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Just want to say thank you for all the time, and yes, he's put into these committees and.
Thanks, Bob.
And just, if by chance my two alternates, because now that I'm thinking back of how you guys did them, if by chance my two alternates were appointed on the same day, will go alphabetical as we have in the past? Fair?
That seems fair.
Okay.
All right, B, write to redemption letters.
So, good news, if any, is that, remember last week, we talked about that we could still accept a postmark, so we did get one payment in out of the four, so the town only foreclosed technically on three. These letters are public and they are public documents, should anybody ask. There are two people living in these homes, so I'm not going to announce the, announce the addresses, I just don't think that's necessary right now. We've handled everything on our end from the insurance piece. So you've got three here, you've got MAP 234, Lot 47, MAP 260, Lot 15, and Lot 230, Lot 11, which is the vacant property. They're all, giving them the option to repurchase the property, giving them through Tuesday, March 30th, if they pay in full. We've attached, you'll find, maybe, an account in detail of all three years through Tuesday, March 30th, and then a $250 administration fee added on, that has to be received by cash, check, or money order by that Tuesday, so that Wednesday night, hopefully you can sign quick claim deeds back and be back on the tax roll for April 1st. So, looking for signatures, and we will get these out certified tomorrow. The Treasurer, while you're signing those, the Treasurer did give us, remember, there's a law change about people over the age of 65 and foreclosing on their homes. It's primarily the, the law affects if you sell the home, what happens with the profits. Hopefully, we don't get to that point, but I do have additional information for you because I think one of them may qualify, but hopefully we don't get there as far as considering selling.
My naughtiest of sitting here, that's the first time we've ever had three of those. We've had one usually.
Yeah, and it's, it's tough because two, because two of them live there. Generally, we see them on second homes.
Yeah.
So, we want to do everything we can, we've reached out to legal, I mean, unfortunately, tax liens are one of those things that, few things that you just don't have the authority to trump.
I've said this every year, it's the worst possible thing that we do.
Yeah, definitely.
I spoke to one of them on the phone today, talk about, talk today.
All right, moving on to C, IWORQ.
Iworks.
Iworks, oh, there we go.
Iworks. So, when you made your code enforcement interviews and eventually made your choice, one of the conversations that you had with your chosen candidate was the thoughts of purchasing the software. I do have that, I did notify all the other applicants, so everybody should know by now, so certainly if you have it by now, you can release his name. I did ask him to come to next Wednesday's night, next Wednesday, Wednesday night's meeting. He wants to talk to you about electrical permits, the Planning Board, just a couple of questions. But this Iworks was something we were hoping to move forward on, you guys kind of gave off-the-record approval with it. I had a Zoom meeting with it today, so I could see hands-on what it does, where it's stored, backup, they gave me a walkthrough of it, something that he's used in his neighboring town for many years. City of Portland uses it, City of Augusta uses it, and it had a lot of references. As he told you, it is about $5,000 for the first year, going forward after that, it's $3,500. This program does absolutely everything from, I mean, it just tracks everything, people can apply for permits online, it's completely web-based, so it doesn't have anything to do with the town server. It's all backed up by an Amazon business account, but you can apply for your permits online, they get email notifications every time you schedule your inspections, I mean, it does reports that will cover all of the assessings, everything that O'Donnell's will ever need, the reports that they're currently putting online for Excel to say what the status of everybody is, it does all, it tracks all of those, it does financial, so it checks the balances of what's going to be, what's collected versus, you know, what the Treasurer has to coincide with the Town Report, audit numbers, I mean, I only sat through it for about 15 minutes because it, you know, I didn't really need the nuts and bolts of the CEO piece of it, but it's got a lot to offer, and this is, you know, what, what he asked you guys to, to do. So, to speak to the Treasurer, based on the sacking changes and where we're at, this year can certainly support it out of the CEO budget. It is only, it's a one-year, and like I said, after that, it'll be $3,500 annually. We've read through all the fine prints of the contract and how we're billed, how we terminate, it's pretty straightforward, so you guys, and it was his recommendation, I talked to him again tonight, just to make sure that's what we wanted to do.
What is O'Donnell's?
I'm sorry?
O'Donnell's familiar with it?
O'Donnell's, I didn't ask them. I don't, to be honest, I didn't ask them. The, right now, I mean, they're getting, they're getting, they're getting copies of the building permits, so because building permits can be electronic, I would think we could, based on what they showed me, say, we can export them and email them rather than somebody having to photocopy them.
He said it does streamline it, it's just so much easier.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to cut down the amount of people that come in and that everything can be done, you know, online if, if people choose, doesn't mean you have to.
Right.
I think when he explained it to us.
Um, I do have that new, um, I did notify all the other applicants, so everybody should know by now, so certainly, if you haven't by now, you can release his name. I did ask him to come to next Wednesday's night, next Wednesday, Wednesday night's meeting, uh, he wants to talk to you about electrical permits, um, the planning board, just a couple of questions. Uh, but this Iworks was something we were hoping to move forward on, you guys kind of gave a off-the-record, um, approval with it. I had a Zoom meeting with it today, so I could see hands-on what it does, where it's stored, backup, they gave me a walkthrough of it. Something that he's used in his neighboring town for many years, city of Portland uses it, city of Augusta uses it, and it had a lot of references. Um, as he told you, it is, um, about $5,000 for the first year, going forward after that, it's $3,500. Um, this program does absolutely everything from, um, I mean, it just tracks everything, people can apply for permits online, it's completely web-based, so it doesn't have anything to do with the town server, it's all backed up by an Amazon business account, but you can apply for your permits online, uh, they get email notifications every time you schedule your inspections, I mean, it does reports that will cover all of the assessings, everything that a Donalds will ever need, the reports that they're currently putting online for Excel to say what the status of everybody is, um, it does all, it tracks all of those, it does financial, so it's checks and balances of what's gonna be, what's collected versus, you know, what the treasurer has, um, to coincide with the, the town report, audit numbers, I mean, I only sat here for about 15 minutes because it, you know, I didn't really need the nuts and bolts of the, the CEO piece of it, but, um, it, it's got a lot to offer and this is, you know, what, what he asked you guys to, to do. So, did speak to the treasurer, based on the staffing changes and where we're at, this year can certainly, uh, support it out of the CEO budget. Um, it is only, uh, it's a one-year, and like I said, after that, it'll be $3,500 annually. Um, we've read through all the fine prints of the contract and how we're billed, how we terminate, um, it's pretty straightforward, so you guys, um, and it was his recommendation, I talked to him again tonight, just to make sure that's what we wanted to do.
What was it, O'Donnell's, O'Donnell's familiar with it?
Um, O'Donnell's, I didn't ask him, I don't, to be honest, I didn't ask them, um, the, right now, I mean, they're getting, they're getting a, co, they're getting copies of the building permits, so, because building permits can be electronic, I would think we could, based on what they showed me today, we can export them and email them rather than somebody having to photocopy them.
He said it does streamline it, it's just so much easier.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna cut down the amount of people that come in and that everything can be done, you know, online, if, if people choose, it doesn't mean you have to.
Right.
I think, when he explained it to us that one night, it sounded to me like what it's gonna do is it's gonna take the workload off, off the small stuff.
Yep.
And, you know, at the end of the day, I think it, it may save us money, at the end of the day. And, and from what I'm getting out of it too is, it keeps a paper trail of when, if somebody submitted a permit, they can't call up and say, hey, I submitted my permit a month ago, we can look right on them, bam, no, you didn't, you did it two weeks ago or whatever. Um, I, I think in the long run, I think it's a really good, good idea.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it.
I am too, so, we need to take a...
As long as we have the money for it.
Yep, I spoke to the treasurer, and we did incorporate, even incorporating the $3,500 into next year with the salary change.
Okay.
CEO budget is still down next year, um, and that's with extra planning money, removing the deputy and kind of what you guys talked about, so. Um, so it'd be a motion for an Iwork service agreement for one year, and the bottom number, or...
I make a motion, we accept the Iworks service agreement for one year for, what's the total? $5,850.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
They have been in business for over 20 years, they did tell me that the $3,500 annual fee, once I'll say this, but they did tell me in 20 years, that annual fee has never gone up.
Oh.
So, so the implementation is 2350, that's, you added that to the 35, that's where they came up with their number. And we talked about all the administration sides, backup, I mean, everything seemed to be in place, so.
And he, he was using that where it is up in Limerick, it was working well.
Right, right, yep, and every, all the training and implementation, I mean, they'll sit down with the land use secretary, um, we can have as many people trained and backed up as, as possible, so.
I guess that's all we need to do.
Did I give you something?
Hmm?
No. What's David got, what's that?
This is the Iworks.
Oh, over there, that's on it? I made copies, but in the moment, I must have lost them.
You want us all to sign this or just one?
Uh, it'd be better if you all signed it.
I just didn't see a spot here for, I'll school my name somewhere.
Thank you. Alright, so we're gonna move on to D, Maine DOT flashings.
And I made copies for you, but, um, I'll have to get them to you, and I'm not sure that we qualify, so this is a rapid rectangular flashing beacons for crosswalks. Remember the Speed Trail of the State gave everybody one? So I guess I, I read it quickly the first time, and as I read it, so if your town is interested, it's no charge, please enclose a return application with photos. So the Maine DOT is offering your town one free set of units if needed, the goal is to improve pedestrian safety at established crosswalks. So, I'm thinking that if you already have this crosswalk piece, they're gonna add those reflective pieces that make it blank, but we don't have...
Do you have a crosswalk anywhere?
We have a crosswalks.
Well, I was thinking down by the fill of lake, but I guess that's the other side of Shapley, but there are no crosswalks in town anywhere?
We had, the only crosswalk we had, the only crosswalk we ever had in the town, that I know of, it was the one up there, uh, the orchard there, for Smith.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
But that, I don't, that's gone.
And it's a private, it's more private to private.
Yeah, that was, yeah.
Okay, so no crosswalk, so we're, we're all set there?
Yeah.
You guys need a crosswalk? Alright, good.
Okay, that's it, alright, so E, um, I brought this up, um, I know when I was running again for selectmen, I had asked how I felt about a five-member Board of Selectmen, and I know Robin had mentioned it and other people here, um, so that's why I'm bringing it up. Um, I don't know, do either one of you have an interest in putting this on the town floor? It's just something I didn't have, you know, when I was running, I did say that it didn't matter to me either way, so I'm bringing it up now.
I don't think we're big enough as a town for five people.
Five people, alright.
I mean, you, you, really, if you start and think about it, you add two more members to the board, you're only adding one more positive or negative vote, I guess.
Right.
You're not adding two more, because if three decide, right now, it's two against one, that'll make it three against five. What's the real advantage, really? I mean, we try to take in as much input from the public as we can, uh, I think if we were, if we were to double the size, six, you know, 6,000 people plus, maybe, but I kind of see it being cumbersome.
I, I think, I, at one point in life, I thought it was a great idea, and then, um, when I was running for the job, the question came up, and I, I don't know if everybody remembers my response, that, you know, you got three crazies, you got five, and, you know, where are you gonna gain from it? But I think if you look at the amount of people actually run for the job, so what, what this, all this would do at this point in time, if you look back through the last, um, say, 10 years, how many times have we had, um, more than two people run for selectmen?
Once we had.
Three, it was three, I think one year when you ran, it was three, okay? And then, then over time, if you look at it, the amount of people that run for it, usually about two, usually it's the same people that lose over and over and over, so all you're gonna do is just give them an easy way in, and the town won't, don't vote them in for a reason. So, I mean, I look at it like there's some good to it, but at the same time, I think there's bad, because what you're gonna end up doing is you're gonna get people in, because nobody's running for the job. So you're gonna get just anybody that signs up for the job, because they're gonna get 25 signatures, so, um, this is the way it's been for a long time. Um, if you don't like the people that are the select board, then you vote them out and get new people.
So, it sounds like a majority of the two of the three aren't interested, so I'm not looking into it legal, getting illegal?
I hope.
If somebody wants to still do this, then they can, um...
Petition.
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 Do a citizen's petition for us to do it, I just, you know...
So we'd not see us denying that.
Right.
I don't, yeah, I don't think we can.
I just don't see, I don't, personally, I gotta think with, what do we have, 2,500 voters?
Yeah, about that, 23, 25, 23, 24?
I mean, I'd like to think that we're, that the three of us right now, you know, is a good rounded, uh, voice for those people.
I, I don't know, I'm not gonna toot my own horn, because I'm probably the least liked person on this board, but, um, I think the majority of the town acting is fine with the way the bud, the way this, this all works. The only people, you know, a lot of the people that come up with these ideas are usually the same people that squawk about everything. Um, changing the wheel over a couple of people, I, I'd wanna see a petition, the petition comes through, and then, you know, put it through, and then we can change the wheel.
Alrighty, so that's a, do we need to do a vote? Okay. Alrighty then, public comments, anybody? Anybody want to speak to it?
The only one that I know of that has brought this forward, uh, to the Board of Selectmen, um, was Robin Hamm last year or whatever, a couple of years ago, I'm sorry, Robin.
And I was asked when I was running too.
And I have to say this, I don't recall Robin Hamm, the person that brought this forward initially, uh, a person that, uh, usually complains about everything.
No.
Ah, you take it that way, Dennis. That this stuff has to be put out, these little innuendos, uh...
Like you don't put them out there.
Alright, we're not gonna start that tonight, okay, let's just have a good meeting here.
We got a good meeting.
I, I think I've been respectful.
Sure you have.
And, um, I'm just standing up for Robin Hamm, that's all.
I, I, I'm gonna say right now, this wasn't against Robin.
No, no.
Robin is a friend of mine, I think, okay? But I do remember, when Robin and I talked about this for a long time, and I was on his boat for a while, okay? But they also do remember, again, it's like what I did say, okay? So it's not just because, because I became a selectman, I thought this was a great idea, but Robin wasn't the only one at the time. There was a group of people, okay? And that group of people, yeah, and, you know, and it's not a problem. And, and, and I just, I believe that if, that we're gonna change the wheel in a town of acting, okay? That we ought to let the town of acting decide that.
Absolutely, like everything else.
Yep.
Now, if someone's complaining about the three-board selectmen, you know, changing everything and running a show, we would be doing that by saying, yeah, let's do it. So, um, so Robin, I'm not dissing you at all.
I know that.
Okay, Dennis?
You can continue on now.
First off, I don't need your permission, I need the chair's permission.
Okay, yep.
And you're attacking me constantly, and you said, Mr. Winchell said two different things. No, we don't need to put this forward to the people, and then, well, the people ought to decide. Personally, I don't really care one way or the other, and I was defending Robin, because you, maybe you need to watch the tape. And like I said before, Robin isn't the person, he did as the one that brought it forward, but he is not a person, it's always trying to find fault.
Thank you.
Twist it up whatever way you want, Dennis.
Okay. Any other public comments?
Sure.
Alright, thank you.
We'd like to change the direction.
Okay.
Hopefully a positive one, it'd be nice.
Can you wait until I get to the microphone, David?
Sorry about that.
Just curious, I know you appointed a new CEO, can we know who he is this week?
You can, I think.
I would think you should be announcing his name.
We're getting there, we're almost there.
We did it last week when we signed his...
No, we didn't, no, because...
Oh, you're right, we didn't, we didn't.
We have not signed, we haven't signed a new appointment, and originally, he was, he was going to come tonight so we could do it, timing would be perfect, but he had a ZBA meeting, but it is all public now, everybody's been notified, so.
I was just curious, is it who we've watched?
Yeah, we will, I promise. Alright, am I gonna tell him? Go for it.
Sure.
Well, I mean, we might as well, I'm gonna go right on the website and see it.
Mike, last name is?
Gilpatrick.
I'm gonna mess it up.
Gilpatrick with a G, correct?
Correct.
Yes, Mike Gilpatrick, he, uh, was a full-time code officer in Limington.
Limerton.
Limerton.
And he also did part-time in Waterboro?
I think he did some in Waterboro, yeah.
Yeah, he did part-time in Waterboro and Limerton.
We feel quite fortunate that we were able to find someone, we had five applicants, I think?
Six.
Six applicants, and they all were good applicants, so, um, primary, my primary reason for selecting that particular candidate, he was already ready to go, he has all his certifications, or almost all of them, and he's got experience, so.
And he had some, some ideas how we could further some things along, and I thought it was pretty good.
Yeah, he was working part-time for us, we had a little situation that we brought him in on, and I was very impressed with how he handled it, and to my knowledge, that's working out okay, so, thank you.
Welcome. Well, any announcements? I think we already did them all.
Oh, I wanna, I wanna say something, I, I wanna thank the acting fire department today. My father had a chimney fire, I guess, today, and I guess I had a pretty good response, and, um, so thanks a lot, guys.
Nothing else, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, sounds good.
I'll second that.
Alright, it's gonna move in second, is all in favor? All opposed?